Okay, good evening. Call this meeting to order. This is an electronic meeting by teleconference. As Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Costa has determined that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, that to properly ensure the safety of the public and that of several of the school-born members who are within the CDC guidelines needing to take special precautions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the board, with the...
My name is...
In accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we're utilizing a teleconference service for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public may join this electronic meeting by calling 1-857-444-0744 and put in the code 649-427. And at this time, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we're going to go a little out of order tonight because we have some students who are going to make some presentations. I will let Mr. O'Connor or Mrs. Hughes introduce them. I would say to the students who are delivering their speeches, it's up to you. Feel free to take your masks off during your speech. People can see you and hear you better, but you certainly don't have to. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. Dougherty is going to...
Mr. Dougherty, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited about the opportunity to have our students come up and deliver their oratoricals. This reflects a lot of really hard work for all of the students on the, in the eighth grade, both teams, the eight Academy and eight Hampton team, worked really hard on this for a couple of months. All the students deliver speeches in their classrooms, and then they progress to a school round. And so, the students who will be coming before you tonight were the three students who finished first, second, and third in Hampton Academy for the finals, which is quite an accomplishment. So, a lot of really good public speakers. You guys are in for a real treat tonight. So, I will first introduce Ella Waddell is going to come up, and she's going to deliver her speech as well. And if you guys wouldn't mind just delivering the title of your speech when you guys come up before you start, so you guys can hear actually what the speech will be about. So, Ella, it's all you.
Honesty is the best policy. Think of this. You're out for a... Think of this. You're out for a walk one day, and a stranger comes up to you asking you where you live. Being completely honest in this situation could put your families and your own safety at risk. I'd assume many of you would choose to lie and not give out your address to this complete stranger. So, is honesty really the best policy? After all, that is what we are taught to believe our whole lives. As kids, we are encouraged to practice honesty on a daily basis. But if we think about it, is complete honesty really the best way to go about your life? Honesty can actually have a very negative effect on oneself and others around you. In certain situations, choosing to lie or not tell the whole truth can result in a more positive outcome. So, how do we decide whether to be completely honest or keep to ourselves? Well, behind every lie, there is a motive. Depending on one's motive, the lie may be acceptable or not. Detrimental lying or antisocial lies are lies told at your own best interest at the expense of others. A poll from Desert News's annual 10 Today Project shows that nine out of 10 Americans agree that antisocial lies are highly unacceptable. On the other side, pro-social lies are lies told based on someone else's best interest. The same poll from Desert News shows that over half of Americans believe it is okay to tell a pro-social lie, like telling your friend their new haircut looks good, even if you don't necessarily mean it. Since believe it or not, complete honesty can ruin relationships, connections, or even your reputation. Telling someone you don't like their cooking or you don't like their outfit are examples of being too honest. This type of brutal honesty can really hurt someone's feelings. As Kate McKinnon, a well-known author, says, "Honesty does not give you a free pass to tear others down than play it off as if you're a admirable person for your honesty." In addition to this, people that are too honest are more likely to become isolated from others and have fewer friends. To prove this theory, an ethicist at the University of Idaho did an experiment being utterly honest for a day. She said, "By the end of the day, people were avoiding me like I had the plague." As you can see, the idea of honesty being the best policy really has been a lie all along. It is okay to tell a pro-social lie. A study from Alto University School of Science in Finland shows that people who tell pro-social lies tend to form stronger links with other individuals within their social networks. An increasing number of Americans today have accepted telling pro-social or white lies. An online survey conducted by YouGov and Y2 Analytics found that six out of 10 Americans believe it is okay to tell a white lie, like exaggerating a story to friends and family. These types of lies can be almost harmless, which goes to show that honesty really isn't always the best policy. In most situations, it very much may be, but we can't forget of the times where choosing to lie or simply keep to ourselves saves connections, reputations, and can even save you from putting your own safety at risk. Thank you.
Next, we have Ella Malloy. Ella?
The most hidden crime. 2010, a pretty big year. The first Apple iPad was released in April, Instagram was launched in October, and Time Magazine announces Mark Zuckerberg as its 2010 Person of the Year. 2010 wasn't a successful year for 15-year-old Rihanna. She and her mom would get into fights, and she would run away. Earlier that day, a man named Jay gave her his number. It was cold and dark, so Rihanna called Jay and asked for help. Jay took her to a hotel and gave her drugs while another girl would take pictures of her. Jay was a sex trafficker, and she was his next victim. He took her phone and forced her to take drugs and do sexual acts for money. Human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, and coercion to get some type of labor. There are many different kinds of trafficking, like Rihanna was in a sex ring. There are many ways that people can get in a trafficking situation, like Jaded to Rihanna. They can be a stranger or even someone you know. When out in public, you might have walked by a victim and you had no idea. Over 1 million people are victims to this crime. The human trafficking hotline has noticed that trafficking has gone up 20% since 2019. The economical reason behind human trafficking follows a supply-and-demand kind of market. There's a high demand for cheap labor and commercial sex, but a low supply of people to do it. There are two major types of human trafficking. One is labor trafficking. This is when they kidnap people and make them do extremely long and painful labor with no pay. If they die, they just find someone else to take their place. Sex trafficking is targeted at females and children. Victims get raped, sexually abused, and are forced into prostitution. In Rihanna's situation, she knew that Jay was sketchy. He was a stranger, and most of the time, that's what traffickers are like. Creepy strangers who approach you at a concert, for example, and take you while the crowd is too busy watching the show. A situation that no one really thinks about is the Super Bowl. Most stadiums can fit at least 60,000 people. Thousands of women, young girls, and children go to the Super Bowl. In the 2009 Super Bowl in Tampa, Florida, the Department of Children and Families took in 24 children who had been kidnapped at the Super Bowl and were being trafficked into prostitution. Most situations involve strangers, people you didn't even know existed. They aren't always strangers. Sometimes, they're nice, funny, and sweet. It could so easily be someone you trust, like a friend or a boyfriend. Overall, women make up the majority of human trafficking victims, with 49%. 33% are children, and men are 18%. 53% of victims are sex trafficked, 40% are used for labor, and 7% are child soldiers. In 2018, over half of trafficking cases were sex trafficking, only involving children. Children who were playing at the playground, walking to a friend's house, walking home or to school, children. There can be some pretty big signs of abuse in trafficking victims, and then some that only a doctor can tell. The bigger signs is that they appear starving, avoid eye contact, responses seem scripted, not allowed alone in public, and are not allowed to speak for themselves. Some that only a doctor would know are untreated illnesses, brandings, and untreated STDs and wounds. A sign that you could be a potential target is when a stranger offers you a high-paying job, saying you never have to work a day in your life ever again. The point of this isn't to say you should never go to the Super Bowl and never be alone. Go out, do those things, have fun, but be aware of what's around you. Human trafficking is a hidden crime, and everyone needs to be more aware of it. After six months of being in the sex ring, the FBI got involved in Rihanna's case and arrested Jay. She went to Courage Home, a group home for girls rescued from sex trafficking. After finally having her freedom back, Rihanna found out that she was pregnant. She decided that she was going to raise the baby, so she went back home. Rihanna is now in her 20s and is in the military. She's very lucky. The ending to her story is not the end to most victims. We all need to be more aware of this hidden crime. Thank you.
And finally, we have our winner this year, and that is Jack Demurbus. Jack, come on up. You guys are in for a treat.
All right. This is Why We Find Things Funny by me. So, show of hands, everybody here. How many of you have seen stand-up comedy on YouTube? Perfect, almost all of you. And, well, I'm here to tell you story about the first time I saw stand-up comedy and how my view of the world totally changed afterwards. So, one day, I was with somebody I know, and all of a sudden, he gets up, walks over to the closet, and pulls out a massive collection of Seinfeld DVDs. I was intrigued, so we watched the first episode. And in the beginning, Jerry Seinfeld standing there, and he's telling a joke about... Am I too close to this, by the way? I'm sorry. Okay. And he was telling a joke about laundry detergent, of all things. So, the joke's going on, but the moment he hit the punchline, I lost my mind. I'm not joking. I was rolling on the floor, and I told that joke to everyone I knew. And, well, then the thought came upon me of, well, why is this so funny? And after a while, that thought formulated into three. First, why do we find things funny? What role does humor play in our lives? And wanting to dive deeper into the fact that we are born knowing how to laugh. And through my research, I've concluded that the reasons we find things funny are deeply ingrained in the structure of our brains. Quick fact, something deeply ingrained in the structure of my brain is knowing where the ice cream mile is and how to burp on command. So, I've come to the realization that we only just are to laugh more. So, what role does humor play in our lives? Well, first, humor is a noun, meaning a comic, absurd, or incongruous quality causing amusement. The first part is especially important, considering what our brains are actually doing when we laugh. To quickly put things into perspective, our brains are consistently trying to find out new ways to think about things and trying to produce new thoughts that have never been thought before. That's why we like jokes. That's why we like humor, because that's all a joke is. It's just taking something and reframing it into a way that's never been thought or said before. That's why we enjoy humor, because our brains like figuring things out, things like, why is the sky blue? Where is our Earth? And where do the school chicken nuggets come from? I'm going to need an answer from some of you. I sure am. So, as you can see, there are many different types of humor out there. There's verbal humor, like what I'm trying to do now. There's physical humor, as well as exaggeration and total absurdity. So, one moment, let me just finish my spaghetti. I've been saving this for hours. Got to twirl the fork, got to... Had some good spaghetti. Where am I? Oh, yeah. So, laughter is important because it creates a bonding effect with one another. That's just another reason why laughter is more important in our day-to-day lives. But after all, what makes something humorous? Well, there's actually a theory to this. It's called the Beegan Violation Theory. This theory basically states that in order for something to be funny, it needs to overlap on a Venn diagram of shock and acceptability. Chasing or tickling is a perfect example of this, because it's an attack from somebody you trust that won't actually hurt you. Another person suggests that something is only funny when conventions like this are undermined by an absurd situation. So, I will now read you a poem from the Italian poet from the 13 billionth century entitled Baja Men. Who let the dogs out? Who? Who? Who let the dogs out is a question that one must ask themselves, and realizing the dogs were let out. Fin. But as you might remember, earlier in this speech, I said that laughter creates a bonding effect with one another. Well, I'm here to tell you about the most important, really, bond of all, and that's with babies. A baby's first laugh generally comes between three, three and a half to four, to four months of age. And like most things in babies, it's a form of communication that they use before they can talk, a form of nonverbal communication. Quick side note, my nonverbal communication is if I walk by you and make a weird chicken noise, it means I'm very hungry. He wants bacon cheese! But in all of humor, in the whole thing, there's a misconception, misconception that some people are born funny and that others aren't. Well, I'm here to tell you from research that this is nothing more than a lie. Humor is a skill, like anything else that we work on and get better at over time, from when we're little to when we're older. So, as you can see, the reasons we find things funny are deeply ingrained in the structure of our brains, but also in the structure of our world and in the structure of life. So, I do believe that we need to find more times in our day to laugh, and also never forget that laughter is truly the best medicine. Thank you!
Thank you to all three of our speakers tonight. Entertaining, interesting. Don't feel like you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's quite all right.
Yeah. Should we get up and leave? Raya, you have to stay. That's no joke. It's fun. They're great, aren't they? They really are. They're so great.
Okay, we will continue at this time with school board member updates. Budget committee, Ginny, anything? Okay. Wellness, Andrea?
I guess from what I'm reading that our administrative assistant, Kathy Tuck, has got people walking, and there's even a prize of new sneakers. They do a certain amount, I guess. So, that's good. That's about all I have on the wellness.
School Boards Association, I don't have anything. Scheduling, Frank, anything?
Nothing.
Learning Collaborative, Frank?
We have a meeting coming up. I sent you an invitation, so we'll meet on a Tuesday morning at 8:30 for about an hour. So...
Here or...?
It's virtual. So, there's a link. So, I, um...
They're going to send me the link?
Yeah, I'll say, I don't have the link yet, but as soon as I get it, you'll get it. But I believe it's probably next. It'll be coming up this week, yeah. It's coming up this month. Yep.
Recreation Department, Andrea?
I know that they've got a ton of new programs. Sorry. I know that they have a ton of new programs, so I would just recommend to everyone to go on the site and look for all the different things. There's a very large variety of things. I know the pickleball's really getting huge, and there's some kayaking, I know, is one of the things that people are, that they have been looking into. So, I would just recommend to everyone, go on, go on their, on their site, and you can pick and choose. There's so many things for all ages and all abilities.
Okay. And policy, Andrea?
I don't think we did anything more this month. We're just waiting to take care of these policies that we have the second read on tonight.
Professional development, Ginny? No. Okay. PTA, Wendy?
Let's see, last month, they did nominations.
Move the mic a little closer.
A little closer, all right. Nominations for leadership positions. So, most of them, I think all of them were uncontested. So, the president-elect is going to be Jen McClellan. That'll be voted on, I think, this coming month, but that's great news. Marvelous Mondays, which kind of replaced their Week of Wonder, is going to happen throughout the month of May. The kids have various classes they can watch online. The PTA put together a ton of take-home kits that the kids were able to take home and do crafts and things like that. So, that was about it. But, yeah, it was a big month.
Great. Frank, negotiations, I know that hasn't started yet. Haven't heard anything. Okay.
Nothing on steering.
Okay. And curriculum, Wendy and Andrea?
Well, I know that Center is still continuing to have their professional learning community groups, and so I know that they continue to work on updating and, you know, perfecting their delivery of the curriculum there. I know there's a lot of testing coming up right now. May is that month where they do their end-of-the-year testing, and I know the fifth and eighth grade have got their handicap tests to go as well. And in the other schools, I believe, you know, again, they meet as, for instance, for Marston, they continue to work on the Common Core curriculum, and I believe Hampton Academy as well.
Okay. Greg, will I know if anybody has called in from the public? Okay. We'll go to principals' reports. Mr. Lannan, Center School?
Good evening, everyone. You had a chance to take a look at my board report. Just a couple of highlights. I like to give updates on numbers. Well over 80 students now have registered for kindergarten. That seems to be going really well. We have budgeted for seven teachers, and we're on track to utilize those seven teachers. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to utilize those seven teachers. Grade one registration, if you remember, that's our lone number right now currently. Our kindergarten class is at 74, in the mid 70s, low 70s. But right now, 17 students have registered for first grade already for next year, so that will bring that well over 90. So, six teachers are slated for that in the budget right now. I'm still all set with that. I don't need any changes as of right now, but I'll keep you posted on that. And lastly, interviews are continuing going on. We've had several openings at Center School. Obviously, we had a school secretary that we just have filled, and we have the school psychologist that's filled. We're smack in the middle of teacher interviews. That's going well. We have a nice committee in place. And the last committee that will take place with, as the posting for the assistant principal closes on May 14th, the external posting on that is May 14th. So, the week of the 24th, I'll be having assistant principal interviews. I have signed to work together with a team of, just taking a look at resumes every day and starting to put together some resumes that we want to bring some folks in. And through the chair, I've talked to Les. If anyone is interested in joining me as a representative on that assistant principal team, feel free to work through Les and let him know if you're interested in joining. You don't have to make the decision on the spot right now, but...
I would love to.
Okay. And I, I don't really want to. Andrea, you probably can't. When would you have these?
It will be, it will be one day during the day, the week of the 24th, probably that Tuesday, I'm thinking.
All right.
I'll do it.
I just need one rep, so...
Oh, that's fine.
Yep. Thank you.
Go for it.
Yep. Thank you. I appreciate that, though.
So, just contact Ginny.
I will do that. Okay, I'll keep you posted on that. I sure do. I know you are... Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
Mr. Sadler?
Hello.
Hello.
So, just May at Marston, end of the school year, lots going on, no planning. We got New Hampshire SAS going on right now for mostly fifth grade. Next week, fourth grade will start. And also, next week, we'll start the science for fifth grade that they take in fifth and eighth grade, and then third grade starts later in the month. So, we're able to provide for our full remote students to come in. We had a few opt-outs, but most of our current third, fourth, and fifth graders are, have been in school yesterday and today in a separate location, participating in the assessment. It just seemed a little easier and more secure than doing the remote option that is sort of still in flux right now. So, we look forward to those results and kind of use that data to inform our instruction for next year. Just one event that's coming up June 1st for our second-grade parents. So, information will come through Mr. Lannan and also our school. We'll have a virtual, it will be live, but it will be virtual, a 2-3 information night starting at 6:00 PM on June 1st. So, if there are second-grade parents that are in the audience right now, be on the lookout for that. Your invitation will come either on the 14th or 21st. And again, it'll be an introduction by Mrs. Hoppin, myself, and some information about the curriculum from the third-grade team, and then hopefully a virtual tour of Marston School, because for a lot of these kids, they haven't come in. And we noticed this year with our third graders, the first day of school is the first time they came in the building, because we weren't able to do those things in the spring. So, we're trying to do as much as we can between Hampton Academy and Center with transition to make sure the second graders are comfortable coming up here, and the parents are comfortable, and then, of course, that our fifth graders are comfortable coming to the academy next year for middle school. But other than that, it's, you know, just, just the normal grind of school and making sure we make this a memorable end of the year for our students, you know? It's May-June, and we're limited, but I know our teachers are trying to get creative and do some culminating activities and, and things that we can do for the kids to provide a sense of normalcy. And also, for our fifth graders, it's their last time here at Marston, so we want to make sure that, that they kind of leave on a high note. So, we're doing our best to accommodate and plan for that.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Sadler?
Awesome. Enjoy the night.
Thank you.
There he is. Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening. I'd like to start by congratulating our finalists tonight. And I'd like to thank Mr. Dougherty and Ms. Clark, who are our eighth-grade language arts teachers who coordinate that. And there were 16, 16 finalists, so you saw the, you saw the top three there. It is, we did it a little differently this year. We did it in the building. We actually were able to do it live. We just didn't, we broadcasted it out to families. Hampton Academy staff were the judge this year, because we couldn't have outside people come in. But that is a rite of passage for eighth graders at Hampton Academy, and those three are very reflective of the, of the class of 2021. So, we've, we're interstate testing. This is, this is testing May. We only have five sessions, but again, you know, anytime we, we have to kind of stop what we do and test, it changes our schedule. But the kids have adjusted well. We're now in our third week of back from full remote, and everybody's in a good stride. We, Greg went over to, went to Kind High School this afternoon to meet with the facilities director to talk about, we had planned to go over to Winnicott. We've run into some logistical things that we'd like to talk to Mr. Lassard and Dr. Costa about before we actually commit. The date is all set. That's the right date. We'll be doing June 16th as our final assembly day, and June 17th is a rain date. We just have to work out some, some details, whether the venue is here or at Winnicott, because we're going to have to bring everything over there to make it work. And, and we have a field out back that may... And, and we have a field out back that may work just as well, if we can make that work. Questions for me?
Anyone have any questions? Easy night?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I have one more thing.
Yeah, sorry.
We actually have two candidates that we're, we're gonna bring forward to you tonight, but I would like to recognize the two committees, and Mrs. Hughes, who, who led those two committees, wonderful candidates, wonderful process, and I think you'll be pleased with the product.
Okay. Dr. DeSalvin Napton, DeSilva Napton?
Good evening. How's everybody doing today?
Good thanks.
For winding down like everybody else. You do have the report. Boy, referrals are high. It's a really crazy, crazy, I mean, so as you know, a referral usually means testing. So there's a lot of testing going on right now for our students, and we'll see if they are referred or not, but these numbers are very interesting. They go up, 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 up. But we're servicing everyone, we're really, you know, we've got a great staff, and, you know, by the way, you had some great hires last year. This department really got a lot of new people, and it was very interesting. Well, I don't know why, but they're great hires, and we're doing good things. And extended year, you know, that's required by law. Services are coming along, programming's happening, and I guess that's about it for me. I attend lots of monthly meetings, and we had a great meeting. Ginny, thank you for attending today. We did our preschool development grant that, it's up and running, and I think Ginny kind of saw the wide variety of people. We've been working together all year on preschool programming, building capacity within our school district, the neighboring school districts, and neighboring towns, so good stuff.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Limparis?
How is everybody tonight?
Good, thanks.
So you have my Board Report. Some of the key features are, I'll talk about Aptogee in a second. I just also want to point out that there's been a bout face by GoGuardian, so we're gonna be able to stay with GoGuardian because of pressure put on them. I like to pat myself on the back, because I really did not want to have to leave them, so I really was one of the key proponents in changing, getting them to change their mind, and they have. So they are signing the DPA for existing districts, and there's a, a term that's used in this, in the business, for people who want to piggyback on the existing one, they're not gonna allow new people to join on, onto the DPA. They will probably tell them, look, we're not gonna have unlimited liability, but for people like us that already have them, they're going to sign that. So that's a win-win for our department, so we don't have to handle switching something in the middle of summer, that's a key player in everything that we do, now that everybody's one-to-one pre-k aid. The other thing I want to talk about a little bit is Aptogee. Did you want me to cover that now, or at a different time?
It's on the agenda. It's up to you under new business.
Oh, yes, do it now, please.
So I'm gonna pass around, this was the pamphlet given to us from the company, Aptogee, when they were trying to get our business, and when you turn it on, the video starts to play, and you can listen to her addressing us specifically, and that was what caught our eye about really marketing this district to get people, and one of the key places when people decide where do they want to move, right? What's the first thing they do? What's the school system like, right? And if you can get to a, a website that's very, really telling of what the district is, and is able to sell it, at least for me, when I was moving up to New Hampshire, I was surfing the internet, I said, oh geez, I don't know about this district. I, I'm not getting a good vibe just from the, the website itself. In a second, I'll cast up for you as you're looking at this, and you can get a preview of what our website's going to look like. Do know it's not done yet. I actually was in a meeting today, right before I went over to the high school to talk with people from Aptogee about some things we're still working on fixing, but I will give you a little preview. So the company's called Aptogee, and their product is called ThrillShare. So the, the principals, superintendent will all have access to ThrillShare either from their computer or right from app on their phone. And in Thrill, ThrillShare, they very quickly can do a lot of things. So when we go to the actual platform here, LiveFeed is if they want to quickly give a, a quick bit, that they want to post on Facebook, Twitter, or the actual LiveFeed on the website, they can quickly just select those things, connect right to them, and it posts to all those places all at once. So you'll see a section on our website that's called LiveFeed, that's simply gonna take whatever they're posting here. They can also go out to those social platforms and put it on the website, and put it on the social platforms at the same time, very quickly. There's also, besides the LiveFeed, News. So if they quickly came across something as they're walking through the building, and they want to put something out there that's a little bit more extensive than one hundred and eighty characters, they want to take pictures, write up a story, they can quickly just do that right in the app, right from this computer, post it, and as soon as they add this new item, it adds it on the website under the News section, I'll show you in a second. Also, under the platform, they can add Events, which will just put it right on the district's calendar, which is tied to Google Calendar now, so that you will actually see it appear in a Google Calendar. We actually had a parent say, well, why am I getting this calendar in paper form? Can I just get the iCal? So yeah, we realized, within minutes, we had converted the district's yearly calendar into an iCal, the people can now add to their phone and see it. So as they add Events, they will appear right on the calendar. Also, Staff, we're slowly putting all them in, but there'll be a link in there where staff can update their, their job title, how to get contacted, their email address, all that will be in it. If I come down to this link here, this is how we manage those pages. I'm not gonna get into the building today, but I'll let you see, this is the district's new website, as it will look in, oh, it's not casting this page, hold on. So this is what our new website will look like. We're going to update the pictures. It's just, we're in the process of talking with the principals of who they want in the pictures, what they want the pictures to look like. Do we want to have pictures? Most of what we have these days are kids wearing masks, so figure that out, are we gonna try and stage something where the masks are off, or authentically with the masks on, and we can update it as masks start to come off, we can take more pictures. But you can see that here, you can quickly switch between the school buildings or the district. You can explore the LiveFeed, Staff, all that, that we just saw in the app a minute ago, that I could quickly update from that software or the app if I was a principal administrator. And then you drop down here, that lets you see all of what's in our current website, all has been changed to here. So what we eventually will switch is, teacher pages will go away, and we'll have a link to the actual page of a teacher, and you can contact them right there in a second. I'll, I'll show you one of those. Before we leave this homepage, I want to show you a little bit more of the homepage. That News Feed that I told you about, that they would do in the app, anything they put in the News would appear right here instantly. Anything that they put in the LiveFeed would appear right down at the bottom instantly. And anything they put on that calendar would appear right here on the calendar instantly, right from that app or from their website. And if we went to one of the pages, just an example, and then I'll move on to something else. Let's go to Technology, for example. Here's our page, and I think he's updating as we speak. This is part of what we talked about. He was going to change this over to have a page that would say Technology Staff, and there you'd have a link to actually contact me. So he's in the process of changing some of that right now, so it's not quite done. But each of the schools have their own theme, tying into what our current theme is, those colors. So there is Center with its green. Here's Marston in its maroon color. And Hampton Academy in its, its blue. So we'll continue updating that, make sure it lines pretty much with our existing webpage, get rid of pages that are kind of old or non-existent or not needed anymore, and that should be ready to go live, hopefully by sometime in, in May, late May or early June, so. And then we have to officially make it our website July one, because we will end our contract with School Messenger and start up with Aptogee, having that be our complete messaging system. So if I go back to ThrillShare, the other nice thing about this is, is Alerts button. So on the app, the teachers, the principals can walk around with on their phone, or sitting down at the computer, they can do all of that messaging right through here. They can do SMS text, they can do a voice call, they can do an email, all that. Oh, you're not seeing it again, I'm sorry, I have to stop casting, because they changed tabs. Right here in Alerts, under that, that when we get back into that app or the, on the computer, they can just do their messaging right through here, and they can do an email or voice call right from here. So if there was an emergency and something happened in the building, Lois doesn't have to run back to her, her computer to send out that message to the district, she can do it right from the app, right there. But that's our website. Any questions about Aptogee? Yep?
Have you tested this with, you know, parents in general to see if it's user-friendly? I mean, it seems to be user-friendly, but I'm asking, has it been tested?
That we'll probably do in the soft rollout, so like in June, and then July one, when we announce this is our new page, we can then, you know, make that officially as our page. Everything I've seen from it is just, in building it and using it, has been ten times easier than our existing page, just from my experience of getting around it. It's so much more intuitive, it's so much nicer, easier to, to build and add stuff to it as well. So I, I can imagine people are really gonna find this as a, as a plus, but we will adjust it with parents in June in that soft rollout. Any other questions? Thank you, if no one else has any.
Thank you. Mr. Lassard, anything for us?
I think that we're doing well. I guess as we approach summer, we're getting ready to do the Center School elevator, remove two oil tanks, LED lighting upgrades, and I don't have my whole list with me, but there are a few other things that are on the docket to do over the summer, other than some projects here in this building on our punch list. And we'll do the summer cleaning. And everybody out there, we're still looking for some strong, young, energetic folks that would like to work a decent job from seven to three, and get fit while you're doing it. Other than that, I think that's about what we have right now. Thank you all for your support, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Frank?
Can you bring us up to speed on the dishwasher? And regarding the punch list that you mentioned in your little presentation, is that, you said it's gonna be addressed this summer?
There are items on the punch list that will be addressed this summer, yes.
And the dishwasher?
The dishwasher continues to be a battle, and we've had a lot of conversations about the dishwasher. No, it's, it's all good.
I did.
It's all good. Yes, we are working on the dishwasher. Lois and I had a conversation in Mariah today with Mary, and I, we're gonna keep fighting the battle. I really do not want our contractors to just walk away of any other responsibilities, and we're nice, but we're stern. The dishwasher will be running properly before we sign off on that. The oven, we are in the process of trying to get that replaced. You know, we just keep banging at the door, and we're not satisfied, and we're not.
Where's, where does the impasse seem to be?
You know, that's a good question. That's a good question. I think we could probably debate that for a long time. I think there's a lot of this. We're in the middle, and if anybody can't see, I'm pointing in both directions. Yes. I think our biggest mistake was paying them their, all their money. And it's not over yet. We will get, we, we're meeting, we have teleconferences every two weeks to go over every single thing. We have ticked off a couple things. But no one's more frustrated than myself, standing here and have to answer these questions when they were really out of my, my ballywick. I will tell you, and it's no secret, that we had our roof scanned here at Hampton Academy with a brand-new roof, and there are five leaks in it. Okay? This is the battle we're fighting with our builder. Not just the kitchen, not just the courtyard, not just the grass not being done properly here and up at the hill, and there are a few other things, but I don't want to go on and bore anybody, but it's nothing that's being taken lightly, and it's very frustrating. I appreciate your support, and hopefully we'll get these all resolved without having to take any further actions above and beyond.
Well, if I may, Keith, superintendents talk amongst themselves, and school boards through the School Board Association can talk amongst themselves, and usually when people are getting ready to do a project, they look at this company, and there aren't many that do big school jobs. Maybe you can remind them that if they want to get a good review, they'll get things fixed.
I think they want a good review. Same as school boards and superintendents and business administrators, facility directors talk as well. So they, they're under some of that pressure. I don't know if it's a covert thing, or what, you know, COVID-19, not covert action, COVID-19. You know, it's just very frustrating. It's very frustrating to come up here and tell you I don't have an answer, that we continue to fight with it. They are, they have shown up, they come out, they send people, they're looking at things. Building is a big, big thing. There's a lot of moving parts. We're not looking at everything that's running right incorrectly. I'm afraid to look over my eye at Mr. O'Connor, because he's probably not happy with ERV-1 and ERV-2. I'm really letting, letting it all out. Okay.
Well, stay after him, Keith.
Yes. In the kitchen? No. It is not, I don't want to say no and jinx myself. They should be as safe, and they also should be aware of what's going on in there, so they can also take precautions themselves. Kitchens are dangerous places anyways.
Also, the room keys, did we get them? And that's something that's gonna...
It's all documented.
It's all documented?
Yep. Not yet, but they have all the information. We just got our scans a month ago, and great things take time.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
No, thank you. Thank you for having patience with me, although I'm getting short one of my patients with our contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, anything?
Two things. I just wanted to let parents know again that we will be feeding the kids in the summer, so the summer program, July sixth to July twenty-sixth, breakfast and lunch, all students that are going to attend the summer program. And again, second, just let parents know, next year USDA has extended the free meals program for next year, next school year. So free meals, breakfast and lunch for everyone for next year.
For the whole year?
For the next school year, yes.
Wow.
I know. So that's it. Anything else?
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the data management position? Do you want to do that through your report, or?
Whichever you prefer.
Why don't we do it after your report?
Okay. Yep, that sounds good to me.
Don't let me forget.
Okay.
Dr. Costa?
Yeah, so it is, obviously, it's a, it's a really busy month, but it's also the time of the year where we show our appreciation for our administrative assistants, for our staff, for our teachers... staff, for our teachers, for our, we're going to first student tomorrow, and for our custodians and everyone to thank them for all that they've done to have as good of a year as we could have under the circumstances. We are grateful, we are appreciative, and I know the PTA went above and beyond to take care of our staff at all of the three schools with all kinds of wonderful treats and drawings and just showing a lot of love, and we're just so grateful for that partnership. So that, that's been, that's been great. The other thing is, is that we're just delighted, our students are in five days a week, we are, we are able to see where students are academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally, and this has been just a great way to end the school year, that we're all back together. It's just a great feeling. Obviously Greg, Mrs. Lynn Paris, went over our new Apteji, which is going to be a wonderful new tool that we will have that will help to build our school digital connection with our families and stakeholders. We believe it's going to be a great improvement, a great upgrade, because it actually is not only a great, a website, but it's actually an app which most families are now using. They're not going to their desktop anymore necessarily, but the app becomes really user-friendly for our families, so we're very excited about that. I can tell you that one of the things that we've always been encouraging is for the teachers to become more actively involved in the leadership at the PTA, and I just want to publicly thank Jen McClellan for stepping up to the plate as a teacher at Hampton Academy to take on the role of the president. This has been very challenging years for the PTA, and so we're delighted that Jen has, is willing to do it. We appreciate outgoing President Lee McDonald, all he's done in a very challenging couple of years, but we are delighted that we have a teacher moving forward that is willing to be the PTA president. So a big, huge thank you to Jen McClellan for doing that. Obviously, we continue to focus on our staff wellness, and as you said, Mrs. Shepherd, Cathy Talk did offer a incentive to get people up and moving the two weeks before the break, and we had a winner at each of the schools for a pair of sneakers. So that was fun to give out this past week, where there was a winner at every single one of the schools that led right into May, which was walk 100 miles. So we're challenging our staff to walk 100 miles this month. Again, just encouraging everyone to get outside, get some fresh air, and to engage in some health and fitness. Everyone who participated was given a nice, some sunscreen. So just a great little incentive for everyone to participate, so we're thrilled that we continue to do that through our Health Trust. The principals are working with their staff on some programming. Just to let you know that those dates have slightly changed, as was announced in my newsletter that went home last Friday. That will be held from July 6 to the 29th, which is the same as the extended year program. It was getting a little confusing, and I just think it was easier to combine it and to put it in the month of July. It's going to start the, when we get back from the 4th of July weekend, and it'll be a Tuesday through Thursday program. We are going to offer transportation. We also are going to offer meals, thank you to Mrs. Borg. And it looks like Hampton Academy will be from 8 to 11, and Elementary Schools Center and Marston will be 8:30 to 11:30. So greater opportunity for our students to get the additional support they need in language arts and mathematics, so we're excited to be able to offer that. As, as our principals have said, this is a time of year that we look at New Hampshire SAS testing, iReady testing at Center School, and STAR testing for students in grades 3 through 8. These summative assessments help to look at patterns and trends, they help to inform our instruction, they also help to give us a barometer in terms of how, how do the kids look this year versus where they started in the fall, so we can gauge their progress. It also helps us not only with our summer programming, but also with fall placement as well as thinking about the supports that we need to put in place. So those are very helpful to all of us. I also want to give you a little bit of an update in terms of the fall, because I know that I'm starting to get those questions and people are anxious and eager to know. Again, in my newsletter, I did give our families a little bit of information. I had the opportunity to speak with Commissioner Edelblue the Monday after our break. He does meet with the superintendents quite regularly. He is anticipating a fairly normal return to school. With that being said, DHHS has also, with that, recommended multiple layers of protection to ensure this, the safety of all of our students and staff. So what does, what does that mean? So I think our feeling is, is that, as I talked with our school nurses, that we would continue to uphold some of the things that we are currently doing. As it is right now, DHHS and CDC is still wearing masks, recommending wearing masks. Now, this may change come August, September, and if it does, then we would obviously relook at it. But as it stands right now, CDC and DHHS is still encouraging the use of masks. They are also still recommending things like cohorting, hand hygiene, they do recommend screening. So we would put those layers in. What has changed is they are, they believe that students can be three feet apart so long as those other measures are in place. So that's really helpful to all of us, because what that allows us to do is to put classes, you know, to put classes together and to help with numbers and staffing. So that's a great thing. So what I'd, what I'd like to do, and we can think about whether we want to have another staff forum, or just open it up at our school board meeting next time, but they are recommending that we make sure that we're listening to our stakeholders and we are considering their feedback, and so we could consider having either a community forum, or we could do, do it in conjunction with a school board meeting. So that's really for your consideration in terms of what you'd like to do. But I'm very excited, because I do think we're, we're going to get our students back. I do believe that it's going to be a full day, and I do believe that we can also put in some of these layers of protection that DHHS is recommending. So as you know, I will continue to work with our teachers, our leadership team, the community and the board, to ensure we're doing all we can to get our kids back and to get them in for a full day, and that is our greatest wish, which we believe is going to happen as it stands right now. So I wanted to put that on your, on your radar. The other thing that you should be aware of is that unfortunately, I did get an email from interim superintendent Carolyn Arakalian, that unfortunately, that they have had to cancel the clinic for the 12 and up, which was going to be on May 26 and June 18. This is kind of hot off the press, just came out today at 4:47. I did send a, send it out to leadership team and all of you, but I want to, hopefully parents are listening. We will get notification out tomorrow and the next day, but unfortunately, they've had to cancel it, and as it is explained to me, the Seacoast Public Health Network, which is SPHN, is shifting all Rockingham County School District vaccine clinics to one large event on Sunday, June 6, which would be the first dose, and Sunday, June 27, which would be the second dose, which would be held at Exeter High School. So they have canceled those mini-clinics, and they are going to do them at Exeter High School on June 6 and June 27, which are Sundays. So I wanted to let you know that, and again, our sincere apologies, we were hopeful, but those are things that happen at a much bigger level that unfortunately, we just don't have control of. And I think that's all I have. Do you have questions for me?
Any questions for Dr. Costa?
So I take it then the mask mandate will be in effect to the end of the school year?
Yes, it will. And we are, we, again, we are following CDC, DHHS guidelines, and that question was specifically asked by our nurses, and many nurses on call, in fact, to get that information, and they were very, Dr. Chan was very clear that they are still recommending the use of masks. As we know, last week, we did have three cases within our district, although I was very encouraged with the numbers, as I, as I noted in my newsletter. We are currently at, you know, 20 cases, which is really not, not a lot, but at the same time, they are still concerned about variants, they are still concerned about students, they are still concerned about transmission. So their, their feeling is, is that, and this is DHHS and CDC, if we continue to stay the course, we will again minimize the spread and also minimize the variants. So that is really what, there's two things that are going on right now, as we try to get more and more people vaccinated, those, in some of those other groups that are currently being vaccinated as we speak. So that's where we are.
For the summer program?
Until, until CDC and DHHS lifts their recommendation, we have, we have always, since this has begun, we have always said that we are going to follow the guidelines of DHHS and CDC. So that's what we continue to do.
Okay, and then you're going to three feet for the summer program?
Yep.
Then, based on the CDC guidelines?
Yep. Well, I would say three to six feet, depending on how many students are enrolled. Obviously, these are going to be small groups anyways, that'll be in classrooms, so I do believe that we're going to be in that three to six feet range anyways. Yep.
And, uh, final question. Your summer program, the academy is running 8 to 11.
Yep.
And Center and Marston, 8:30 to 11:30. Why not the academy, 8:30 to 9:30, to keep it all?
Uh, for busing. We want to, we want to make sure that the busing is, again, we want to, we're going to only have probably a couple of runs, one that goes east, ones that goes west, and we really want to make sure that, that the buses aren't overcrowded as well. I mean, parents always have the option of dropping off, but we do want to make sure that transportation is not a barrier, so we want to make sure that the students that need to go and, and want to go are able to go, and transportation, hopefully, this helps.
So I don't want to put words in your mouth, but what I thought you said is that for the fall, we're going to reopen all three schools as normal, as normally as possible, which would be a full day. They wouldn't come home at 1 o'clock or close at 1 o'clock, and there would be three-foot distancing, so you said something about cohorts.
That, that's a great question. So that's something that we are continuing to work through. I know that, I had a conversation with Mr. O'Connor, in fact, today, yesterday, because we know at the middle school schedule, that becomes tricky, so we are going to continue to work with DHHS as well as our superintendents and to see what middle school looks like. Again, it's looking at what they call specifically, multiple layers of protection. So they give you 12 different layers of protection. So I, I think it's going to be important to think about what are those layers of protection? And so I think those are the conversation that Mr. O'Connor, Mrs. Brand, myself, and superintendents will be working through as we speak. And, and remember, things change all the time. That's, you know, that's the other thing. We need to have a plan, believe it or not, filed with the Department of Ed by, they want mid-June. So with that in place, we're planning for what it is now, knowing things might look different in, in August, September. But as it stands now, this is where we're at. And, and obviously, if they say no more masks required, or they say something different, then obviously, we would revisit that. So I think we have to acknowledge that the landscape is changing all the time, right? So we just have to be mindful of that, and I think that we try to be very on top of it through the nurses continuing work with DHHS, my continuing work with our superintendents and the commissioner, to make sure that we are on, we are right, we're getting the information and we're making the, we're making the changes and getting the information out and making changes based on what we know.
I, I, based on the feedback that I get, and I'm starting to get a lot more than I used to get, I, I think, I'm just saying what I hear, I think parents have had enough. I think parents want to go back to normalcy.
Yeah.
I, I think they could probably live with masks, although I know some can't. But I know the cohorts would not be popular again. Frank?
Question regarding, and I think this is going to be an issue in the fall, is transportation. Have we looked at that because of trying to get drivers, number one, for the bus companies?
Right.
You know, that's going to be an issue.
Well, I think, you know, what we've done this year is we've, we've done the best we've, we can, given the situation. We do have, and I see it, because I'm at Marston School, we do have families that are carpooling more, they are picking up, they are dropping off, we are seeing more students even walking and biking to school, we're seeing more of that, so that, that's something that we're looking at as well. Again, I think where we are now and where we could be in August could be very different, and I'm hopeful that it is going to be, I'm hopeful for a more normal return, but we really, we're watching it, you know, we're waiting to see, and I think the important thing is, is that students will be in for full days, students will be getting integrated arts, and students will be, those are the, those are the knowns. I, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I would, you know, I would give you a, a great story.
Is it possible to have your integrated arts teachers teaching if you have cohorts?
It is, because, so part of our problem this year is that, remember, we were also required to do, under the governor's orders, to do a remote option. So what that is, remember, that also pulled out teachers to do, to do remote. On top of that, we also, we had spacing issues, so then you have more students in your class, so you have spacing issues, and then you have staffing issues, which really kind of tied our hands, right? So as a result, you had an all-hands-on-deck for teaching, which basically means that, you know, teachers start their day at 8:15, 8:20, and the day doesn't end until 1:20, and at that time, they've not had, I, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to be honest right now, they have not had a bio break, they have not had a lunch, they have not had a planning, it's all of that stuff. Because if the distancing goes down to three feet, it allows us to get classes in, and please, if I'm speaking, please speak up, it allows us to get our students in so that we don't, we won't have that issue, and we will no longer have to offer the remote issue, I mean, the remote option, because we will be open full-time. So do you see what I'm saying? There's a couple of things that...
Yes, I do, I do.
Does that help?
That was what I was going to ask you.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate, do you anticipate us offering the remote again?
No, no. In fact, the commissioner was very clear about that, that we would not have to offer remote.
Okay.
So let me just clarify from my own understanding. When you say back to some normalcy, are we looking like, for example, the academy, which is, I'm going to say 7:30 to 2:25? And then the other schools are 8:30 or whatever, the time side? That's the normalcy. We're not going to go to a 1:20?
Yes, yes. Yep, that's what we're planning for. Will the students be able to change classes? That's what we're hopeful about. Dave, do you want to weigh in on this? Thank you.
That is, that is going to be the challenge. We have to keep cohorts. Remixing students would be tracking or tracking mayhem. So we have run a program, we've run integrated arts this year, but we're, a classroom is a cohort, okay? Your individual solo, those kids don't remix. Next year, that'd be very difficult to run a word language program, an algebra program, or a band and course if I can't remix kids. But again, never say no, it just makes it more difficult, that's all. And that's the challenge. We're, we're planning on, on not remixing three to six feet, and you know how that, creating that... We're planning on not remixing three to six feet, and you know how that, creating that schedule goes. All of a sudden, they change that, it's going to be, we're going to do a couple of schedules, I think. So it is what it is.
But normalcy, when we talk about a return to normalcy-
We're close.
There's no cohorts.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
Okay, that's what I mean by normalcy. Okay.
Thank you.
And no remote learning?
No.
The only thing that might not be normal would be the mask-wearing.
Right.
And I think that mask-wearing bothers parents more than it bothers kids. I think kids are very adaptable. It's us as parents that put on our feelings on to the children, and I think the children will do fine.
Right.
Or teenagers, I don't want kids to think of-
So the discussion we just had is the latest discussion that we can have?
Right.
Until we get further direction from the CDC and the state.
That's right.
But there's a lot of people out there are asking the questions.
No, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Lois?
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, superintendents report. Should we talk about the data management position?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
So Greg, do you want to start? Are they good to go? Do you want the people to go?
I'm going to apologize that I don't know if you have-
Guys, if you want to go, feel free.
Or stay, whatever you want to do.
As of yesterday afternoon, I got the latest numbers from my peers. As the New Hampshire CTOs did a survey of what the pay was for all the positions in our department. And it doesn't look good for our district and my department, and one of them specifically being the data manager. But I can get into all the positions. We're severely below the state average when it just comes to pay. We can then break it down to location, size of district, those things will make a difference. But looking at the, at the data manager's position, she is currently at forty-one-nine, five-eight. And when you look at all the other data positions that I have in the state, and I can go through their locations if you'd like, but you get fifty-one, five, twenty-two, two, sixty-eight, seventy-two, sixty, seventy-five, sixty-eight, five, thirty-four, sixty-eight, eighty-five. So those are the positions that I have data on that were given back to me. And when you look at South Central, and if you want me just to give you the pay of the people in South Central, or Seacoast area, it's fifty-one, sixty-eight, seventy-two, seventy-five, sixty-eight, sixty-eight, eighty-five, and forty-one. That forty-one being our data specialist. So the real problem here is, if we keep the course of keeping the position as it is, is two-hundred-and-twenty-day position, and we have to find another data specialist, is finding someone. I have just looked right before I got up here, how many applicants I have, and it's been posted for a little over, almost two weeks now. I have three applicants, four. One was a person from a nearby town. When I contacted him and talked about what the pay was, he said, "No, absolutely not." Another one was a man from New Jersey, and he almost laughed at me when I told him what the pay was. So I had two more candidates. One was a secretary to a specialized department in another district, and he had some interest. And I haven't contacted the other person that has applied to numerous jobs in the district. I've seen their application been reviewed for a number of years by different people in the district. And I haven't contacted them to see where they would fall with what the current pay is. But I think it's something we need to revise, I just don't see how we do it too quickly.
If I, if I may-
I just want those numbers again.
If I may. I believe we need to talk about this in non-public.
No. No. Because you're talking about a position, not a person.
Well, we may end up talking about a person.
Then you have to go into non-public, but as long as you're just talking about the position, the position is public knowledge as to what you're going to pay the salary up.
But there's only one person doing that.
We're talking, right now, we're talking about the data management position.
Around the state.
Around, no, Hampton data management position that we have open at this time.
Okay. All right, if it goes-
It's filled at this time. It will be open on June thirtieth.
It's open right now. So we're talking about the data management position that is open.
They're taking applications right now.
Right, we're taking applications.
That's an open position.
If it goes somewhere else, we should go in and open.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right, can we, again, he went through those numbers quickly. Do you have that?
I could share it out with you. I don't have it printed. I just got it yesterday afternoon, and I was, I came in late this morning to get my daughter back to college, and then I was in meetings most of the day, I apologize, but-
What's our current salary?
I'm sorry?
What is the current salary here at SAU twenty-one?
It's on the paper I just gave you. It'll be forty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight for next year.
Forty-two thousand?
Seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight.
Next year.
Next year. It's on that paper as current.
That's all right. SAU twenty-one, where are we?
I don't have their data, they didn't submit it.
Seventeen.
I have sixteen, Exeter.
The Seacoast.
Okay, Exeter's pay is sixty-eight-five.
Are they full-time? I mean, are they three-hundred-and-sixty, Greg?
Yes, from what I saw, some of these were from an email. I sent it out to the list and said, "Can you give me?" And some of them tell me whether it's full-time or not. I'm pretty sure she said she was full-time plus extra hours that she puts in.
Okay, sixty-eight-five for Exeter.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have Portsmouth?
I do. Portsmouth is seventy-two.
Seventy-two. Okay. And you don't have anything for twenty-one. How about, do you have Concord?
Concord, I do.
Yep.
Concord is seven, I'm sorry, sixty, she told me sixty-five in an email, and then in the survey, she said sixty. So I think the person that they have is currently retiring this year, so I think maybe they're rolling it back to sixty, and that's why she put that, I'm not sure.
Okay, sixty-five currently.
That's what she said in the email.
Sixty-five. All right. Any others that we want to look at?
Oyster River, sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine in Oyster River.
Yep, sixty-nine, five-thirty-eight.
Okay.
The next highest in our area, a little above hers, is Derry, but I spoke with him just the other day.
Derry.
The director of technology there is a president, the CTO, so I got the information from him, and he said he submitted asking for additional pay. So right now, it's fifty-one-five, but I think he said he was trying to get another five thousand added to theirs at least, so.
Okay, so he's at fifty-six-five. How about Nashua?
Nashua is eighty-five thousand.
But remember, Nashua, Portsmouth, and Concord are cities and larger districts.
Right.
I understand that, but it's a competitive issue that you have to look at, okay?
So, so we're talking about possibly upping the salary for this position, that's one thing. And the second thing is, how would we find that money, because it's not in the budget?
That's, that's the number-one question here. Because it's not just that position. My network administrator is one of the lowest paid in the survey that I did with him. He, on average, most of my department, from the state average of pay, is close to ten to fifteen thousand dollars below average. It's a snowball effect that it happens. And this is, me as a pure administrator, and understanding where you come from, and what I have to try and do is that you look down on it and you say, "How do we do this?" Because if one person gets that kind of pay increase, the other people say, "Well, wait, my pay is way behind with the averages as well." And it's just a compounding problem that we have to figure out, and it's-
Well, it's not easy, but it's easily solved in November and December when we put a budget together for a year from now.
Right.
When we put a budget together, I think we should do something we have not done in the past years. And that is to present to the school board a true budget. And give us what you feel people earn, need to earn, what we need, and then we have to have some honest discussions. But then we're not in this position of, well, we'd like, they really deserve sixty thousand, but we know that might not pass, so we'll do it forty or fifty.
Sure.
I think we need to go forward and work together to get, try to figure out how much we actually need, and then go from there. Because we are seriously underpaid in some positions, and we've got to do something.
But I don't think, and you may be absolutely, you're probably a hundred percent right about the other three people in your department, so that if you, if you raise one salary, so on and so forth, but we wouldn't have the money to do that right now.
I know, that's, the tough part is that, the longer we don't, the longer we don't deal with the problem, the worse the problem becomes, right? And then we have to start to look at the potential of serious rollover as people start to say, "Well, I can go next door and make a whole lot more money." You know, that's the thing we have to be concerned about.
Well, I have a question. How did we get into this position to begin with, when our district, okay, in the past, significantly in the past, has been there, as a district that people sought to go?
If you go back, and if you go back through all the budgets, it was one percent, one percent, one-point-two-five percent, one percent, two percent, when every other place was doing three percent.
But those were the recommendations coming from the administration to the board when we did that. I've sat on six of those budgets, and those were the recommendations brought forward by the administration.
Frank, I can also say, and I hate to throw anybody under the bus, but I visited this problem three or four years ago. And I said to the previous administration that my department is underpaid. It wasn't as seriously underpaid as it is today, but I said that we need to do some sort of correction, and they said they couldn't. They said there wouldn't, I don't remember the exact reason why it wasn't going to be done, but there was a little bump that was made, but not anything to get us caught up. And it's that snowballing effect. I mean, if you said, "Hey, we could find an extra five grand per position per year," you're now three years out, forgetting about a two or three percent increase every year of cost of living, right? So it's, at this point, like a five-year fix, right? If you don't make a sweeping fix in the budget, it's, it gets worse.
We are sitting in the reason why the raises weren't getting more than they, than the one percent and two percent. We're sitting in the reason.
You're talking about the building.
Right here. I'm talking about the building. Everybody was focused on, we need the junior high, we need the academy, we need the project. So what are we going to do to get the project? We're going to cut back and not give-
That was three years ago. There was two years before that.
Frank, there's always something, go back. There's always something that takes precedence. It's like the town and the roads. You got a sewer project, the roads grow. Take some, you know, it's the same thing.
And this, and we're known for kicking the can down the road.
Exactly.
And you want a thin budget, and what is eighty percent of your budget?
Payroll.
So, if I may-
And also understand competition too, right? Technology's become such a huge thing that-
That's blown up in the last ten years.
The pay for those positions has grown at a faster pace than some other positions have, and that's a competition.
So, so I, I think we can do a deal with the three people, and I think we're going to have to, in September, November, during budget season. Do you have a recommendation, or do you guys have a recommendation as to what to do with this as we advertise for someone?
Do you want to?
You want to go first, and then I can?
Yeah, you go first.
Well, I know that, having spoken with our current person, she would, she's not, she would consider coming back if the conditions were correct. So I think it's a matter of visiting what the week is-
We are now getting into non-public information and discussions.
And I think salaries should be discussed in non-public.
Well-
I think that first-
And then we can bring them up.
Okay, if, if you don't discuss what your position is paying, then you are adjusting the pay to the person who you want to be in that position.
I think we need to also adjust the position does, that's the recommendation I'll have.
And that's not exactly what you should be doing.
No, no. Go ahead.
So, so I think, you know, what's, I think there needs to be a small adjustment for this year to show our movement and our intention to obviously look more seriously at it. So this, there should be an adjustment of, let's say, five thousand dollars anyway, to, to recognize that we need to move forward, but we need to move forward very judiciously because there are many things that we need to move forward on. If you look at the piece of paper that I gave you, you get a sense of, you know, a number of positions and where this position falls. And so it's really, you can see, it's a little out of alignment. So my recommendation would be-
I disagree with you.
Okay.
Because I think you should go to ten.
Well, I would go with, I would go with ten.
I would go, only because that, where does it come from?
You know what?
It would come from-
Hold on, hold on.
Agreeing.
Hold on, Wendy?
I just said, where does it come from? I agree.
Yeah.
Comes from the savings that we have if we hire teachers that have left on the top step, and we hire on the lower steps. That would save, that would save ten thousand dollars.
Well, we just have to find it from the budget.
Right.
Right.
But can I just add that the need, if we're going to make any kind of adjustment, we also need to adjust that to align with a year-round position, right?
I was just going to say that.
Because all of these salaries, I was giving you, most of them, ninety percent of them are year-round. So ours needs to be year-round as well, and there's plenty more work I can give that year-round position that I have not because of where the pay was. I said it's just not fair for me to dump on the kind of work that other people are getting paid nearly twice as much to do, so.
I heard Dr. Costa suggest five thousand. I heard Ginny suggest ten thousand. I haven't heard you suggest an amount. And you've been looking at the applicants.
Yeah, I mean, if, we're not trying to figure out right at this moment where that money comes from, I think ten thousand is one that gets those people very happy. It doesn't make them satisfied to, I mean, but it gets them closer to where they need to be, right? So in that position specifically, I think ten thousand is a good adjustment, because I think we're going to struggle to find someone with the number of positions that are open in that position right now across the state, so.
Excuse me. I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion right now that we, as we advertise this position, we increase it by ten thousand dollars.
I second. Well, before you do that, will you make it year-round? Because that's-
That's crucial.
Okay, so if you do it year-round, I think ten thousand is good.
Year-round, ten thousand.
That's crucial.
Thank you.
Yes.
Second discussion?
Yes, I think we need to discuss this further, because that's got implications to a domino effect on other situations. So I'm just saying, I disagree with the ten. I think it's closer to fifteen based on the numbers here, okay? Based on these numbers, ten only moves it to fifty-one.
Well, we're hiring someone right now.
Fifteen moves it to fifty-six, which is still-
That's what we have.
It's a start. It's not saying it's the end-all. You know, we still have next budget season.
And I understand that, but then it-
Dr. Costa.
But Frank-
Dr. Costa, please.
But my concern, Frank, is if you do that, then it puts you at odds with some of the other people in that department. And I, that's what I'm fearful of. We need to be-
And that if I said it had a domino effect.
That's why I think the ten thousand going to year-round is fair.
Okay, the motion is for ten thousand. Further discussion? Frank, we know you think it should be fifteen.
No, no, I'm saying, and I just threw that out there because of this, but I'm saying it's going to have, even the ten is going to have a domino effect.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of increasing this position by ten thousand so that applicants can get hired? Raise your hand.
And year-round.
And year-round.
Year-round. Post, Frank? Four to one.
Is there any objections to me adding additional work that hasn't been in there? Like, we handle data integration.
You just need to change the job description.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Anything else you need me for?
We'll talk.
All right. You don't need me for anything else?
No, I don't think-
Yes, sure.
I make a motion that we start looking at positions and salaries, starting with, why don't we start with technology and start it at the next board meeting?
Okay.
Great.
And we would ask for comparisons like you did for this position.
I have them off right now.
I know you do, so probably, I know you probably did, but I think we need to start somewhere. We also have to realize that our custodians and our kitchen crew are making nine to ten dollars an hour.
You're going to have to look at fifteen. You're going to have to look at 15.
And I'm telling, even they go to work at McDonald's for 15, so we've got to look at that.
12 at McDonald's, 15 at...
No, they just up their sign.
Oh, did they? All right. Whole Foods is at 15 and they're opening up.
So I believe Ginny made a motion.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry.
I second.
And Wendy seconded it. Further discussion on that? We already had a discussion. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Mariah?
Ah, I have six weeks left till I close the books. So it's been very busy in my office. Kelly has started. She did her second payroll this week. So kind of multitasking in the office. But, so six weeks to close the books. We're trying to close up the purchase orders, get everything closed up. My goal is to close the building project this year and have everything done and completed. Auditors are coming at the end of July. So it's, the next couple of weeks are really tight for me. But it looks like we're doing good. We have four payrolls left to run, about five payable runs left. The numbers are close. We have all purchase orders put through. So now I'm just kind of getting everything, making sure that everything's closed up and seeing where we're at to, to finish our budget off. It's really just cleanup right now. It's looking good. I, I'm, for a COVID year, for not knowing how it was going to run, being in, being out, being in, all of the extra supplies we've had to purchase, the struggles that we face, I think that the budget has been tight, but we've done it. And I really appreciate all the CARES money that was received that helped us a lot. The grant money that has been given to us that we've been able to really utilize. And the grant money that we're going to be able to utilize for summer school. So that is all getting worked out in the next couple of weeks.
Any questions for Mariah?
Oh, the food program? So the food program, so...
You're showing a negative of...
Yes, if you did notice, I noted that in the revenues, we did not have the revenues for April in there.
Yes, I noticed that.
Yeah, so that would, if you, it will be about the same as last month. So it'll be, my guess is around 65, which is...
6,500?
65,000. Negative, yeah. And that's less than last year. That's my, my guess. Doesn't mean that it's accurate right yet.
And that's basically because we've been in a COVID situation. Nobody's been buying lunches. And then the free food program.
Correct. And our goal for next year even, it is still free. It is free, but free doesn't mean free. Free, 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 free.
Correct.
So, did you get that commercial joke? Nobody?
Terror attacks, I got it.
We have the free and reduced forms that have to be filled out. They have to be filled out. Not for us to give you free food, but it is what the state looks at to give us Title I money and other fundings. So if that does not get filled out, our numbers go down. So our goal next year is with your enrollment packets for the students that they, it's going to be, everybody has to fill it out. It's not for you to get an application for free food. It's an application for us to get funds for us to service students. So books, supplies, professional development, all of that falls under that form. It needs to be filled out. I cannot ask a million enough times to please fill that out when you see it next year. If you haven't filled it out this year, you can still fill it out.
Can't we just include it in the packet that goes out?
We do include it, but not everybody fills it out. So I, I think it's going to be a mandatory form is what we're going to have to push.
Well, it's going to be a mandatory form to be returned regardless.
So that's one of the things that we have to work on this year, coming year. But I will have, hopefully have a cleaner number next month for food service.
Any other questions? Okay. In your packet, there are several nominations.
Yep. All right. So, starting at the Adeline C. Marsden School, we'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Ashley O'Keefe, who is replacing Mrs. Susan Antico, who is retiring. Ashley has a master's plus 30 and is on step six. She received her BA in psychology from UMass. And then she went on to get her, her extended degree in counseling from Revia University. She has been working with Child Protective Services or New Hampshire DCYF. And then following that, she was a behavioral caseworker in the Kentucket School District, SAU One. And she's done some work at the Hudson School District. And most recently, she has been at Center Woods Elementary School and presently at Mont Vernon. I know that she's going to bring with her varied professional backgrounds, coupled with her education, which we feel will make her an ideal candidate for the Adeline C. Marsden School. And...
Replacing a legend.
She really is. You got that right.
Well, you have nominated her.
Yes, I have.
Do I have a motion to approve that nomination? Frank, seconded. Wendy? Discussion? All those in favor? 5-0.
Thank you very much. This is for your signature.
Yeah.
Moving on to the Hampton Academy Middle School, another, another legend. We have Lisa Wenger is retiring after 20 years in her social studies position. And we would like, I'd like to nominate Cara Dumont, who comes to us from Old Dominion, which is down outside of the U.S. Naval Academy. And she was interviewed by the Hampton Academy team and can tell you that she has a lot of experience in the private sector, in private school. And she is coming back to this area because her family is in Hampton Falls. She is incredibly dynamic and really just going to be an outstanding fit for Hampton Academy. And so I ask that you support my nomination of Cara Dumont, who would be a master's, step three, 15 years, 15, master's 15.
Is she certified in New Hampshire?
She is. Yeah, she is. And she has certification. Yes, she does. Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion? Frank, second. Andrea? Any discussion? We, we don't get many people coming to us from the Naval Academy.
She's in a private school there, and she's phenomenal.
Can I just ask one question? What is the National Teachers Board certification that she hopes to get by December 2021?
That is, that is a pretty significant accomplishment. It's like 2% of all educators go for this certification. I think it speaks to her level of professionalism and her tenacity towards being a lifelong learner. She, she really is quite dynamic. Yeah, hard to get.
Apparently, she's at St. Patrick's though.
Yeah, it's a good, she's really at a great school.
No, St. Patrick's here or St. Patrick's?
No, down in, down in Virginia.
Oh, is that St. Patrick's in Virginia?
Yeah, no, 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 she's down, she's down in Virginia. Yep.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0.
Thank you. And then the final candidate this month is going to be Sarah Grody, who is replacing Ben Francisco, who we know resigned. And she is, again, a dynamic individual. She would be on step three with her master's. She has been in the Barrington School District at the middle school for the last two years. Very involved with our PTA. And the principal could say enough wonderful things about her. Really sad to see her go, but her home is in Hampton and this is where she chooses to be.
Can we get a motion? Frank? Ginny, second. Discussion? All those in favor? 5-0.
Three, three outstanding candidates that I think will really add a lot to our district. So we're really pleased with the quality of the candidates. And we look forward to continuing to fill those vacant positions. So I will have more for you next month. So thank you. You do have one resignation.
Yes. It was hand-delivered.
Yep.
Resignation from a fifth-grade teacher, Jennifer Lansbury. Can we get a motion to accept it? Frank, second. Ginny? Any discussion?
She's a, she's a tough one to lose. Jen has been there for 18 years. I had the pleasure of hiring her along with David, went to her wedding, saw her buy her first house, saw her have her first child. But she is going to take some time off, so it is sad to see.
With regret?
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's a tough one.
All good?
It's a tough one.
All those in favor?
Tough conversations.
So what positions do we have open that we're advertising for now?
So currently, we have two fifth-grade positions. We have a STEM teacher and a math teacher at Hampton Academy. And we have, at Center School, we have a classroom teacher and an assistant principal's position.
Thank you. Six positions?
Yep. I wanted to bring to your attention just one other thing in your packet, just because we're, we're talking about positions. And I just wanted you to have a look at some salary scales, just for your review, just to see how we are stacking up against our sister district, which is right next door. I'm, I am aware that we could have another resignation where, where I know for a fact that if you look at, for example, where, let's say, just for, like, where is the bachelor's step with 15? On step five, it's $50,106 for one scale. But if you go to the other scale for next year, step five, bachelor's, step 15, step five with 15 is $55,000. We're, we're, well, it's starting to make a difference where we're seeing some, some movement in that direction. And it's got, it has me concerned as a superintendent and it has our principals concerned because the later we get into the hiring season, the more difficult and challenging it is. So next year, as we think about our C and CESP, I'm also concerned about paras that we were unable to fill this year. We'll really have to look at those schedules to be thinking about trying to close those gaps. And it's not something we want to do in one year, but something we want to work on over time, being sensitive to our taxpayers and being sensitive to the situation. But at the same time, we are only as good as our staff. And retaining high-quality staff is the only way you get high-quality education. We are very concerned about these critical shortage positions. Anything in technology, math, sciences, as well as foreign language and special education. Those critical shortage areas are hugely problematic for all of us. So those are things that we are looking at. The other thing that we can have a conversation about is, if you watch WMUR, is the conversations around substitutes around the state. I know that we made efforts to look at our nurses this past year, but we may need to be thinking about what we are going to do to fill our positions of subs. We are, we are struggling with filling those positions. So we may need to look at that and compare it to really that step one, right? So just to have that on your radar.
We do need to look at that. I, I, I'm guessing we can get through the last four or five weeks.
We can. We can.
So maybe that's something that we talk about in, in the summer or we wait until budget season, we definitely talk about it then.
I think you're going to have to put money into that subject when we open up in the fall because the budget season is the next year. And if we're going to be struggling to fill those positions, we're going to be in the eight ball. And we're going to have to look at where we can draw that.
If you jump it up too much, where are you going to pay for it?
Well, I think if you can show movement, like, you know, even if you jump it up to $100, you know, you could, I think showing movement gives people encouragement and it shows that we are addressing it. And I think that sometimes they, they know that at least it's on our radar and we're trying to do something about it.
But in the meantime, if, if you've got, say, the next door going 110, you know...
Well, I did send to about 10, 12 schools a request to get all salaries. And that's from substitutes all the way to teacher schedules, paras, custodians, food service, everybody. We, I've gotten about five back. So I'll get all those numbers together and I'll have that for you guys.
How many paras have resigned so far?
Dr. DeSylvan Apton?
Yep. And then there's, there were a few that we couldn't even fill this year anyway.
How many are still open?
Two, three?
Yep.
So now we're down five.
Yep.
And how many are we going to need for next year?
How many do we have total? Do you know?
Well, you've got a lot of kids in referrals, so that could jack it up.
Yeah.
The problem with that is they're under contract.
That's why it's for negotiations, conversations, yep.
Okay, folks.
And that comes up this year.
We have eight policies. Do you want a second read for all of them? Do you want to take them one at a time or you want to just take them all at once?
All at once.
I'll make a motion to accept all of these policies as we have read it twice now.
As a second read.
As a second read.
Second?
I'll second it.
Frank? Any discussion? Sure, anybody doesn't want to pull any of them out?
There are legal...
Put them in.
They're all the legal ones.
We have no choice.
They're all legal characters.
Okay. All those in favor? 5-0. We have some minutes to look at from April 7. Public, April 7, public. I will move we accept those. Second? Frank? Any discussion? All those in favor? 5-0. And then we have a non-public.
I have some corrections on the non-public.
Okay, can you give us the corrections?
Okay, if you go to page 54.
54.
We're on 52.
Am I?
Oh, I'm 52. Oh, did I do it wrong? Oh, maybe I have, I, maybe I have them out of order.
Yeah, we're on page 52.
I make, I make a motion to accept 52, non-public.
Yes, sir.
Wendy will second that. Any discussion on that? It's pretty short. All those in favor? All right, okay. So now...
We have the April 13 public session.
The April 13 public. Did you have something on there?
Yes. So on page 54, it was, unfortunately, it was not, it was just Wendy who was with Lois at the policy meeting, that first sentence.
Oh.
So you can take my name off there. Oh, down at the bottom, I congratulated the winners of the oratorical contest, not the orange oracle. I thought that was kind of funny.
Anything else?
Yeah, on 55, about the fourth sentence down, screenings for child find, not child sign, child find. Do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Anything else?
Oh, and yeah, on, let's see, again, about halfway down. Mr. DeLuca noticed homeschooling has increased by 15%. Are any of the students being homeschooled in need of special ed services? Not, are any of the schools, any of the, yeah, schools being homeschooled, students?
Thanks, Andrea.
Anything else?
That's all I saw.
Anyone, anyone want to make a motion to accept these as corrected?
I'll make the motion.
Move Frank. Seconded Wendy. Discussion? All in favor? And the last one is the non-public session of April 13. Anyone want to make a motion to approve those?
Make a motion to accept those.
Second. Second.
Mariah does a great job with that.
She does. Good thing she doesn't ask for any more money, though.
Right?
All those in favor?
It's coming, right?
Right.
Okay. Now, minutes. At this, I guess everyone has signed. We were going to talk about whether we were going to have a July meeting or not. What's your pleasure? Can I, I've been thinking about it. I, I would not like to have a July meeting, but I would, I would open myself up to have two in August when we might be needed a little bit more.
What dates in August?
Well...
I'm gone the last two weeks.
Well...
Well, I'm sorry. I hope you have fun.
I'm on holiday.
I hope you have, oh, you're on the Cape.
The second one would be if we need it.
We need it, all right. Either that or we do place time.
Yeah, that's true.
Always do that.
Okay. I'm on holiday on the shore.
I figured, good for you.
Ginny, Andrea, Wendy, what do you think?
I'm fine with that.
I, I guess I'm, my only concern is we've got a lot of things up in the air, like regarding, you know, the back-to-school plan and all of that. And I feel like things are changing so quickly that, I don't know, I don't know. I just, I'm a little nervous about our back-to-school plan and waiting until August to make a decision about that.
I agree. We've got, so we've got three meetings before school starts.
Well, then why don't you two make a motion to have a meeting in July?
We have, yeah, we really have. This is just a discussion, there's no, no...
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
And I really don't care.
What if we did it on the 21st of July?
It's a little later.
A little later.
That's fine with me.
You mean do the first one and then do the 21st?
Do the 21st, then you'll have another one on the 11th.
August 11th.
Yeah, August 11th. I'm sorry, August 10th. I'm sorry, it's July 20th and August 10th.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna go July 20th and August 10th. So we didn't eliminate the July meeting.
We did not.
Okay.
And that's fine with me.
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion that we have a July meeting, only change the date to July 20th.
Then you're having one in August 10th, right?
Yep, that's the regular one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
July?
And August 10th.
And don't go too far because we may be doing negotiations during...
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, so there goes the shore.
Well, I have gone back and forth.
There, there is something for non-public. Can we go into non-public?
Yes, we can.
Don't we have to vote on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna vote in the meeting.
Non-public under RSA 91.
No, 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 I meant on the August, the July 20th meeting.
Oh, we can, yeah.
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 I made a motion.
Yeah, she made the motion. I think she seconded it.
Wendy seconded. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, now you can go into your RSA.
Okay. Go into non-public under RSA 91.
Line meeting.
A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, A. Roll call, Frank?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Andrea?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's know, there's a situation that happened at...
Now, there you go. You're good.
Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Wendy? All those in favor? Aye, we are adjourned.